Carlos Nelson with Cascade Media Group. And today we have our third district councilwoman, Ms. Melissa Robertson. Welcome to the show, Melissa.
Thank you for having me. How are you today?
Doing just fine. Hey, Melissa, the reason I got you on the show today is to talk about the new city manager. I think it was Thursday of last week that they signed the contract with this new city manager. And you, you know what, you threw up the alarm twice on my show. When you were running for city council, you were still on the school board. And you came in for an interview and the election was, and you were, you raised the alarm. Nobody in our community knew, for the most part, that they were downsizing the school board from nine members to, and that was like the Thursday before you could sign. Monday was the last day you could put your hat in the ring. And nobody in our community knew. They knew that the election was coming for the school board, but they didn't know. And hence, you sound the alarm again for me. I don't know about other people. You posted something on social media and you said, hey, all of y'all were basically, from what I thought, your mic was gonna go with this guy. But at a late, late, late date, some things come in about discrimination. And where his la, he last was employed. And y'all said, hey, how about holding up the vote for a week? That was my understanding from your post. Now, as I say, the ball is in your court, Melissa. Tell our audience exactly, give them some backstory on this and what's going on.
Right, absolutely. And let me just level set for one second, just to let people know the dynamics of the city manager and the city council. It does us no service to not work well with the city manager and not be welcoming when we have a city, a new city manager. Because the, the issues that we're facing in the third district, Mr. Nelson, they are so dire and we are in great need that it's important for us to have a good relationship with the city manager. However, and this isn't a personal vendetta. You know, people are like, oh, you know, perhaps maybe there's issues because her person didn't get picked. Well, we're past that. We know that this, this individual, I did not vote for him to be the city manager because we had more qualified African Americans. And I felt like he was, he ascended to this position and even the consideration based on white privilege. And that had he been African American, he would not have been considered for the role. And that's why I voted not to select him as, as the city manager. I was still going to vote no, as relates to his contract, based off of that same line of reasoning. However, my request to my colleagues last Thursday was the Kansas City Calm, a week prior to our vote, released an article that stated that there were some allegations of discrimination in which Brian Platt, our new city manager, was a part of. And so I asked, can we please wait a week to figure out what was his contribution? Because the video that I had seen is just a short clip video. He was given direction to the city council regarding the reorganization of a Parks and Recreation Department back in Jersey City.
This is brought to you by Willis Book and Vinyls.
City council were asking, like, are people gonna lose their jobs? And he was like, no, no one's gonna be, you know, displaced. They're just gonna, you know, file a letter of inquiry. So I just wanted to know what's happening. Because if we as a council are saying Black Lives Matter here in Kansas City, we need to figure out, you know, what happened to the black lives in New Jersey City. Because this person is the, you know, road to many improvements. We need our city manager to be someone who's not going to perpetuate systemic racism. And I wanted my colleagues to be able to have exposure and information and knowledge so that we can make a wide open decision regarding what happened in Jersey City and how that might impact us here in Kansas City.
Yeah, well, let me say this. I applaud you, as I say, that we're, we're, we're a black owned network. I consider myself a black nationalist and I don't make no apologies for that. And I think in 2020, in light of the Black Lives Movement and the overall world movement on white supremacy, white privilege, and it's a systemic problem. And it is perpetuated throughout the world through the political systems and the corporations, which when you look at their makeup, there's not too many people of color that are in positions. So when you are trying to make change as representing the black community, I said this off camera to you. I think that you're in the light and you're in the right in, in, in the movement that people like Akruo, Ocasio, and that your, your generation are saying enough is enough. And it's no free passes. We FBI, CIA, and everybody. And if you overlook a black person that has the credentials, we wanna know why.
Right. And, you know, you know, people, you know, are saying like, hey, it was political, he had more votes. Look, I'm not in here for politics. I'm in, I am in to see to make the quality of life better for those who I represent. Black, white, Hispanic, Asian, whatever. If you're a resident of the third district, I represent you and I'm here to represent your interests. I'm not here to make these political maneuverings. That we, it's time out for that. Like, we don't have time for that. Either is right or is wrong. And this, in this situation, when we're talking about the fire department, I don't know if you wanna get into that.
Let me say this, Melissa, I brought you on, I wanna get into everything that is in our community.
Yeah, so let's talk about the racism that's happening within the fire department. The, this, this is connected to whom we have chosen to be our city manager. And so if you can't sit and say, oh, this is, you know, horrible, we need to make changes, though, that's all hot air. We're tired of hot air. We're tired of your promises. We wanna make sure that your votes match the commitment that you're making verbally. So don't come to our community because I'm just one vote. We have four African Americans, five with the mayor that's on the council. If we vote.
I told you I wouldn't, but I gotta interrupt you. Mention the mayor.
Yes.
All right. The mayor voted with the majority. Why, why do you think he didn't vote with the, the black council members on this?
Well, because Brian Platt was the person that he felt was the best suited for the job. I mean, you know, that's just point blank and period. Now, you know, can we give him some, you know, historical lessons? Can we talk to him about how this plays out from a racial lens? Yes, we can have all of those conversations. And is there a level of disappointment? Just, I can just speak for myself to say that Black Lives Matter, but then we, we just skip over individuals that are qualified for this job. That's a problem with me and there is a level of disappointment. And if you did not feel that this slate of candidates were the best suited for the job, then you go out and you get new candidates. You don't just try to gloss over and say, oh, well, we're gonna go with this person again from a political lens. This is somebody that we're in a relationship with for the next four years, making $265,000.
You going where I was going with that package? I looked at that package, I was like, damn, I'd love to have that.
So, so my.
Down, run the package down.
$265,000 a year, I think it's $22,000 for moving expenses, car allowance, you know, medical. And if he's terminated, you know, without cause, then we have to any up for a year of his salary. So this is a long-term commitment. And so for us to be exposed to this information regarding discrimination and then just say, oh, you know, oh, well, we're just gonna plow through, we're just gonna move forward. That's problematic. So I'm not going to allow people to look me in my face every week and tell me that Black Lives Matter. And then you make these types of decisions and don't feel like that you're going to be held to account. But I can only do that as one person. We need the community to also speak up and to back this play to say, look, enough is enough. Don't come to our community. All of these, these, we have six members of the council, seven with the mayor that are elected citywide. That means you voted for them if you live in the city of Kansas City. I'm in district, the people who live in my district voted for me. But the members who represent this entire city, we need to start bringing them into conversation and into relationship and explaining to them our expectations regarding their actions towards us as a community. So I am very concerned. I have nothing, I met with Brian Platt on Saturday. Seems like a very likable guy. Seems like he has a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm. But the reality of it is, is if you participated in perpetuating racism in Jersey City, in which I am finding that to be true, how is it that I could ever be able to work with you on dismantling racism here in Kansas City? That's a problem. And so we just need to have that conversation openly and honestly. And we as a community need to get together and level set with this manager and let him know what our expectations are.
Well, I think you laid that out pretty clearly. But what I wanna lay out also is that's the purpose of Cascade Media. For our community to be informed. But if our city officials are not sending, using their email list to let their community know, hey, this is our media company, this is where you can see me at. This is where I'm gonna be giving you the 411 on what's going on. And this is where I'm gonna be asking you to write letters and to call officials, whether they're city officials or state officials or national government officials to help you improve your economic, social, and educational positions here. Cause if you live in the third district, what you're saying is, I don't care what color you are, I'm black. But my position is the third district representative. And we can't really hold these people accountable. We can hold them accountable in words. But when you get behind Ms. Robertson and your third district representatives as a community, that lets everyone else know that it's not Ms. Robertson talking, it's her constituents talking. And if you don't wanna listen to that, then suffer the consequences. And Cascade Media Group is here to say, all our council people, when we call you, you need to come on and talk to our constituents. Cause if you think that you can wait this out, let's see about that. Cascade been around since '08. And I will devote quite a bit of time on each and every council person. As Ms. Robertson said, that you have seven councils that are voted by everyone in the city. And if they are not taking, our council representatives are saying, we don't want this. And the other council members are not taking our council people seriously. I think that we need to get a strategy to let them know that when that term is up and let anyone that's getting ready to run for that see that if you are at large and you're not taking the African American's economic and social and educational concerns seriously, we will not vote for you. And so now, me being long-winded, what does your colleagues, the other three blacks on the council, have you had conversation with them?
We haven't talked at length or really at all regarding this. We, we voted as a block as it relates to the city council. Waiting a week, we all voted, so wait a week to try to figure out what happened. And then we also did not vote to support his contract. And so here's the other thing that people should know. And that this, it was so.
This program is brought to you by Dielectric LLC, Energy in Motion.
Fortunate because we're here to do a job, right? Like, we're here to, I'm here to uplift the voice of the council, of my constituents. But I, but the full council got a letter from Jersey City council members. And at the bottom of the letter, and this was to support Brian Platt and to talk negatively about me, to say that I didn't do my due diligence, in which we paid a search firm $20,000 or $2,000 to research this guy. But this, these are a group of African American, mostly, city council members in which Brian Platt knew that they were sending this letter to me. But they said it to the entire council, saying, we're happy to discuss further if you wish. But in the future, please contact us before you make any additional public statements in this matter. That was said yesterday to ask to tell me. Yes, to tell me.
Oh, can, can I get a copy of that? Because.
I will send it to.
Commentary just on that.
Yes, it's like, who are you to tell me what I am to do to represent the workers and the rights of the workers here? And the sad thing about it is the, the, the city manager knew about this. And his response to me was, they were gonna take more aggressive action and I stopped them.
Hey, 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 Melissa, gee boy.
Excuse me?
Yeah, excuse me.
So folks don't understand what the dynamics are. People don't understand what's at play. People don't understand that when you do speak up and you do speak out, this is the type of nonsense that comes back. And we need to be unified together to say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take this.
Sent him invitation yesterday to come on What's Up, Kansas City? And I think it's for, I think it's for Thursday at noon. Because, yeah, we're gonna demand basically that every council person come on at least once a week. And we, we're in a new, we're in a new era. And all of that hiding and, and, and having, having your aides fall on the sword, that's not going to get it anymore from my perspective. Cause I'mma call and I'mma call and then I'mma tell my audience, I don't get no return phone call. They dissing black people. Cause if they dissing your, your digital news, they dissing you. And I think we gotta get this solidarity and we have got to focus on economics.
Yeah, we do. And speaking of economics, I do wanna just quickly say, it is unfortunate that we're dealing with all this foolishness with our incoming manager. However, I do wanna say that we do have an important ordinance that's coming before the Neighborhood Planning and Development Committee on this Wednesday regarding economics, regarding economic development in the third district and the fifth district. Saying that if you want to do development in this city, we are not going to give you 100% tax abatement if you're not developing in severely distressed census tracts. That means areas in which have been redlined, areas in which have been historically disinvested, areas in which we have too many Dollar Generals, too many gas stations, too many CVSs, too many, too many things that do not directly impact our economic mobility and our economic benefit. So if you're going to take tax dollars, then you're going to invest it in the areas that deeply need it the most. And so that's a measure that's going before Lee Barnes's committee. And we'll be talking about it tomorrow at 1:30. And I would encourage you to reach out to the city councils. And let me just give you one statistic to put this in context. The Kansas City School District loses $60 million a year because of tax redirections. And when you talk to the communities in which I serve in the third district and I say, we, we ask them, you know, what does economic development means for, to you? Well, it means the development of my children. It means education. And so to take $60 million, which is, when you look at the other school districts, it pales in comparison. There's a huge deep disparity as to how other school districts are impacted that are mostly white school districts in comparison to diverse school districts. And so we're saying to them that you cannot take money from our libraries, our schools, our mental health funds if we cannot feel, touch, see, and feel the actual investments that you're making. We built and gave all the tax incentives to the downtown development in which we are not allowed to even enjoy. So this economic development incentive reform is something that is going, is not a gradual change. It is a huge change in how we're looking at development. And so I just want people to know that we're working on your behalf to see those things happen.
Boy, see, damn, you must be the mind reader and stuff. I was getting ready to touch on that because I was not a happy camper. First time I ever came down to one of them city council meetings and, and spoke. That company over in Kansas, coming downtown, supposed to be creating jobs. We gave more or less all these millions of dollars to come. And now somebody has bought the company.
I'm sorry for my facial expressions, but it's like we got played.
The, the city was complicit in it.
Yeah.
Because EDC was representing the damn company that was coming back. And I'm like, how can the city be against it and for it? Or how can the city even be saying that they neutral when they got my boy Drew Solomon coming up presenting their case?
Yeah, and that's something that I didn't, you know, obviously vote for, but it's just, it's sad. It's really sad. And that there's, you know, little to no clawbacks on those situations. We, we have to do better. We just, we have to say like.
Let me cut you off. I told you I wouldn't cut you off, but I'm. The, the problem is, community, and Melissa, I know you'll co-sign on this. Even when these people get these contracts, there's so many other things that are involved in those contracts, different industries and different things that require employment. And they don't use black lawyers or they don't use the, the, the people in accountants and, and things. And all of that's economics. And we, we cannot be given the tax breaks or letting these people come in our community. I, I always pick on the milk companies because I say Highland Dairy and all these different names. They're in our community, they're delivering milk to our school systems and, and what have you. What are they doing in the actual community?
Absolutely.
And, and so now that we're getting a little revenue here at Cascade, we're looking at putting someone on, looking into all these corporations into their records. And that, that takes money. We are so impoverished, our community, it's hard to even investigate these people because it costs so much money. And you really can't trust none of your agencies to do it because the economics will make them deal with the numbers differently. But I think from a political standpoint, we've got to have our own think tanks. And even if we only thinking about what we're gonna do for two years, I think we have to start that. And, and that's where leadership comes in.
Right, yes.
And, and, and I'm gonna end this with, we have got to get away from personalities. And I'm here to say, Melissa and myself don't agree on a few things. And I had my grudges with a bunch of people. But you know what? The creator woke me up and said, how you gonna move down the road by yourself, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah.
And I think all of us need, that truly wanna move down the road, have to look at ourselves before we look at who we don't like and all of that. We need to, who we don't like, but let's look at what assets they possess. Whether it's economic or it's brain power or whatever. And is that gonna get us closer to our goal as a people? Or me acting ignorant, like, I don't like him, but he's got the only game in town. And so we're not gonna play. So my whole community suffers because you don't like somebody.
Yes, and when you hear yourself saying, I cannot work with this person, you need to double check and triple check yourself. Because what is it that person, what does that person have that, like you said, will help us get together collectively? In politics, there are only a few versatile, universal rules and truths. And that's, one of them is no permanent enemies, no permanent friends, just permanent interests. So I don't care what you did to me, when you did it to me, you ran against me, stepped on my toe, put out, whatever. I don't, that, that, when we're trying to get something done for the community, I don't have to break bread with you, I don't have to have my Thanksgiving meal with you. I don't have to, you know, go to the movies or shop for shoes together. But we do have to come together and say, look, there is some wheat that may be mixed in with some tear based on our own thinking. But let's get to the wheat because that's what we're going to do to collectively move forward. And if you are someone who studies other cultures or you try to figure out, okay, well, let's, how do they do things? One of the things is the division, you cannot move forward with division, right? You have to be additive. And no matter how much we cannot stand each other, no matter how much, I don't wanna call Mr. Nelson oftentimes, I know I'm gonna be on the phone with him for two hours. And I have, I feel like I have other things to do. I have to connect with Mr. Nelson. Because he is, he has so much, you have so much that will be able to offer our community so we can move forward. And you're the technology arm of that. And so I gotta put that aside and keep it moving.
Right. And you know what? I tell people all the time, I really don't get offended at people saying, cause I do talk a lot, I do do this. So I acknowledge it. But as I said to, I think I told you Mickey Dean and Alex Ellison, they were telling me, well, you interrupt your, your guests a lot. I'm more like, I designed the show because I want certain things to get across. And I don't make no apologies that I'm not as sharp as I should be here. When thoughts come into my mind, I'm like a trunk. I'm going with that because you start talking, I forget. And it was an important thing that I wanted to say. So I make, I tell my audience, I cut my people off a lot. Now, if you don't understand what I just said, tough.
Keep it moving. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
I appreciate you and really love you more and more. I'm saying genuine, because Melissa, I had differences with you. And if I, if you're looking at this and you black, please look at yourself. And don't blame yourself, because we are only products of our environment. And we have been programmed not to work together. But every time you don't wanna work with somebody, listen to what she said, check yourself.
Yeah.
What's your closing words, Melissa?
Well, thank, I wanna thank everyone for listening. We do have a community brain trust in which we get together and figure out what are the policies and things that we need to do to move the third district forward. You can reach out to lisa.ross, L-I-S-A dot R-O-S-S at kcmo.org to join the Community Brain Trust for the third district. We also have the third bench, which is an initiative to make sure that we have people who are interested in political service that are on the bench for the third district. And so we encourage you to reach out to us because we have to pass the baton. And we have to make sure that people are adequately prepared to take the baton and that you're, you are engaged in the processes now so that you're not looking for the bathrooms, because that's not fun for anyone. We have to move forward and we encourage you. We have to move forward and we encourage you to, to get involved and to be engaged.
Pleasure having you on the show. And as we always say, when you invest in your community, you're really just investing in yourself. Good night.
Program is brought to you by the Kansas City Business Association.